The town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, where we're going. Today is Monday, March 14th, 6:30. We're beginning our budget schedule work sessions for fiscal year 2018. Tonight, we're going to begin with the library. The library director, Mr. Lord, is here. And Robert, you're going to be giving an overview of the accounts as we start to work through them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under the, you know, the town charter, the manager, town manager is responsible for recommending a budget to the town council. And so I will review my recommendation for each of the departments. I did bring department heads in in case the council has questions that go a little bit deeper than perhaps, you know, I'm able to answer. So I brought them in as a resource. With that in mind, the library budget is on page J23. And J24, you should recall that the library budget is an enterprise fund, meaning that, you know, we, the town appropriates a good portion of the library budget. They have other funds as well. So we'll review both the expenditure and the revenue side of the budget.
Okay.
The budget, as requested, is an increase of $5,837 or 0.8 percent, less than 1 percent. The changes, there are various changes throughout the budget. The full-time salary increase is at the 2 percent level, 1.98 percent, which is basically the same staff we had in the current fiscal year and, you know, with a 2 percent increase in salary. A good portion of that is fixed by union contract. There are some, you know, non-unionized personnel as part of full-time salary as well. Part-time salary you'll see is going up by 3.8 percent, $4,104. Part of that is because of the 2 percent increase to the part-time rate. The other is that the fact that there's 15 Sundays in the year, next year, for the winter, you know, for keeping Sundays open. Over the wintertime, there was 14 in the current fiscal year.
Okay.
So it's just, you know, we could certainly cut back to 14, but, you know, the way we count the Sundays and the way they fill this year, it's a, there's a 15th Sunday there. We mostly fill Sundays with part-time people. You'll see, you know, a relatively large decrease in books, $12,000, but you'll see an increase in non-print media. It's just a sign of the times, which is moving from, you know, print to non-print type of resources. You know, we have electricity going up somewhat, but natural gas going down based upon our use and rates. Machinery and equipment, we have less being bought, proposed for next year. So that's pretty much the budget as recommended. One item that Doug had requested was some additional help in the children's library area, children's library section. I, we talked about it somewhat, and I didn't feel that this was the year to add to it, but I would like, with your permission, to just have Doug describe what his, you know, what he was seeking, just so you're aware of it, because I'm sure this will, you know, come up as we move forward, you know, perhaps, well, perhaps you made me inclined to fund it this year, but, you know, I don't think the need's necessarily going to go away. So, you know, if that's okay. I told him we had 90 seconds.
Now, I have 90 seconds, but I'm going to give you 400 seconds because I'm generous and because I believe in providing bang for the buck.
Yes.
All right. I want to thank you for supporting the library at this incredibly difficult budget time. I realize there's many unknowns, that you're working with partial information, and it's a moving target. Included was a request for a new part-time position at the library. Robert was kind enough to listen to the pitch, even though he told me this was probably not here. I think it was worthwhile because, as you mentioned, these sorts of needs are not going to go away. So I'm hoping to underscore the work that the library, specifically the children's department, does. If any of what I say makes sense, it's because I stand on the shoulders of two giants, Rob and Robert. If it doesn't make sense, it's all my fault. Okay, I don't wake up every day thinking about how many Steven Seagal movies I'm going to circulate that particular day. Not just my staff. Despite the cinematic excellence and entertainment value packed into Mr. Seagal's films and his viewer, we're focused on not stuff at the library, but helping people. My two advantages over Google and Amazon, which of course, everybody knows are my leading competitors, because everybody on the planet tells me that, oh, isn't the library obsolete because of Google and Amazon, the two most successful businesses to ever grace the surface of this planet? My library engages people and transforms people. I provide just trusted, trustworthy information and resources that help people. High-quality, early childhood programs and services are critical to the healthy development of young children. My library is more than a book warehouse, and that offers literacy activities and numeracy in. I am very proud to brag the child's native language. My soft side, the library's soft side, is what draws families in, draws families in and makes a difference. We're seen as a safe space for families with children on the autistic spectrum, where Michael is garden space, where a place where local parents can meet, have a cup of coffee, chat about parenting, in a safe educational space where the kids are going to be all right. In Plainville, I believe there are about 890 kids aged 0 to 5. There's 11 daycare's, nurseries, pre-K centers. Each month, the library brings literacy programs to five of those centers, about 175 kids. We see a lot of others at the library, but I want more. I'm a greedy person. I want to see all the children in the town coming to my library. I want them there because I know my children's librarian and her staff have the know-how, the resources, and the personal gumption to make a positive difference in each kid's life and help them be ready to learn when they enter kindergarten. We work very hard to stop the summer slide effect. During the summer, we get out into the community. We welcome a lot of people into the community, and it's intensely successful here in Plainville. Forty-two percent of the activity level in the children's library happens in the 11 weeks of the summer. Forty-two percent of the activity in 25 percent of the calendar year. It's a huge slump of activity. So here is my nonexistent request of the town council for $14,321. If that amount ever came available, one of my goals is to make the library healthily staffed enough to handle that intense summer crush. But my larger goal is that I want to enable the library to sustain that higher level of engagement, of learning, of transformation, particularly with the preschool crowd and with young families all year long. I don't want to see this as just a summer bump in activity. I want to increase our activity all year and get the young families and children the services that they need so that Plainville, I know that we're 127 or so in the Angelic Rankings, but how is it that we're 61st in the school rankings? Dr. Brummett would tell you that the library is the starting place for these successes. At the library, I don't do it all, but the school can't do it without me. So I want to assure you that we, that the library participates in savings, consortium pricing schemes, or some sort of scheme where we save money on every single thing, service or subscription that we buy. We seek and receive grants, but there is so much that should just not rely on specialized funding streams. We collaborate whenever and whenever possible. The current state squeeze looks to cut about $8,000 from my budget next year, '18, '19, not '17. And there's a once-reliable physical delivery system that is unfortunately going the way of the DODA word. So to conclude, in the same way that Maureen Brummett isn't really concerned with whiteboards or chalk, and in the same way that Robert has saved a quarter of a million dollars for the town in debt service for next year, I'm not concerned with Steven Seagal. I know that prisons base their loan-end plans on third-grade literacy rates. To a prison system, 52 children equals $1 million. It's a dollars-to-donuts comparison. Two-thirds of students who can't read proficiently by the end of fourth grade will end up on welfare or in jail. Over 70 percent of America's inmates can't read above the fourth grade level. Our focus at the library is on diabetes, it's on third-grade literacy, it's on traditional literacy, it's on digital literacy, it's on helping the unemployed, it's on making a difference in people's lives. Yes, some of that involves finger puppets and doctorships, but those are tools to an end. That's pretty much my manifesto. Thank you very much for your time again. And thank you again very much for funding Robert. I really appreciate being able to have the opportunity to work in Plainville and to be your library.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's a little, you know, like I said, value-added service.
Indeed. So is that position in here or not included?
It's not.
Okay.
It's not.
Oh, see the amount again?
14,321.
14,321?
14,321.
And you said you have been in contact with our superintendent coordinating things with their early childhood education program, with Linden Street School Family Resource Center, all of those things you've been working with already?
Yep, we're part of the, yes, exactly. I mean, I see us as part of the quilt that makes up the fabric of the community. So again, we're an element of it. We're not all that out of a bag of chips. You know, we partner very well and very effectively, and I think we're an important component. I do think we can be functioning a lot better, at least a little bit better. I would love to be able to do that. But yes, we're very involved in all of the initiatives in town.
Do you have volunteers that work at the library on a regular basis?
We do. Volunteer help is kind of precious and hard to come by. I'm so sorry. And many, many times, there are, in order to work at the library, especially at the checkout desk, there's confidentiality issues or issues of if a child or a young family wants to check out something that might be sensitive, there, it's kind of like the Hippocratic Oath for Librarianship. We never talk about it. It's always completely confidential and on the side of the patron, and there's pretty strict professional codes about what we can solicit from the patron and what we can't. So we're very leery of having volunteer help on the actual reference desk. Even me, when I go down to children's and help out, I'm great at checking out, chatting people up, and just chatting, talking with them, and giving them a smile and stuff. What I lack and what my children's professionals have is a deep knowledge of, like, the deep lessons that are going on in town. Or a really common question is, somebody comes and says, my kid is in second grade, they're reading slightly below, what do I give them? And it's just not that simple. So there's a whole, it's an entire project, an interview process, to get that child the correct book, or at least as correct as we can. Too easy, they're going to be as distracted as they ever were. Too difficult, they're going to be as discouraged as they ever were. You know, you want to provide a breadth of choices. So even, you know, I don't want to, like, say, you know, even me with all my skill and knowledge, that's what I struggle with. So having an actual, uncoming children's librarian down there who knows what they're doing, that's kind of the critical piece. Any kind of help is good help. We all help out down there. There are many staff who were not hired for that, their temperament is not suited for that, you know, maybe they don't like children, I'm not saying that. Anybody in particular, but if you're hired for adult reference or you're hired for adult circulation, that's kind of what you do. So it's not necessarily a skill that translates to doing things properly. We all do the best we can. I think we do very well. I just see room for growth. I think we're just poised for breaking through, like, a new wall or something.
Yeah, and just, how that number was calculated, just for, you know, your information, is 19 hours a week times 32 weeks a year times $14,049. So that's the, you know, level of, you know, person we're talking about. If somebody's working basically at $14.50 an hour, which, you know, is not a highly-paid position hourly rate, but, you know, certainly isn't minimum wage either.
14 what?
$14.49. So the total budget that I'm recommending is $737,929. If you flip to J24, that talks about the revenue that's to support that budget. And the key, the key figure, in my mind...
Can I just ask one more question before you move on to revenue? Despite Doug's denigration of Steven Seagal, how come this, even though I understand the comment about, you know, we don't have it in the budget for this year, or you didn't feel it was appropriate for this year based on what we're facing, why wasn't it in the department request? Just so we have it on the radar?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
That's all. I mean, at least if we had it in the notes, we, you know, we'd know for next year.
And that's one of the reasons why I felt it was, you know...
Okay. All right.
We can add it in the final book if you would.
Yeah, I mean, just so, I mean, in the event, in the likely event that it's not funded this year, at least, then we know to look out for it next year. Or if we have some alternative funding sources and the other things we've done, where we've found grant funding for the first year, split it the second year. I mean, I don't know if we have some other mechanism we could do this with.
Yep.
Okay, fine.
Any other questions before we go into the revenue side? Hey, Robert.
On J24, if you look at that at the bottom of the page under 49105, which is inter-fund transfers in, that's basically what the general fund contributes to this budget. It was my goal to hold the, you know, pretty much the same amount that you contributed this year, which is $659,050. So the impact to the general fund to support this 0.80 increase would be zero, the same amount that you're contributing this year. Another relatively large number that funds this budget is their use of fund balance, which is the fund balance in the library, in the library fund. At the beginning of this year, the library fund had a fund balance of $54,857. However, they've had a pretty good year from the funds that they have, which is, you know, up where it says use of money, the Bee Willer Trust Fund, the Kalar, Kalar Trust Fund, the Legacy Fund. There's some interest revenue investments that came in this year, and that really is depending upon the market. We do get distributions, so you teach the difference between distributions and investments. The distributions are something that we can count on, the investments really depends on the market. We're expecting that the, we had budgeted $30,780, and we're estimating that we're going to get close to $70,000 when all this ends up at the end of this year. So we're anticipating that our fund balance is going to increase from the $54,000 that we had. And what you'll see is, I can't tell you what the exact amount is till the end of the year, but I feel comfortable recommending a use of fund balance of about $25,000 for next year, which is an increase of $5,000 because there are some decreases in some estimates as far as the use of money is concerned. We've talked over the last couple years that at some point in time, we're going to have to, you know, we're not going to have the fund balance to be able to use to offset this budget, and at some point in time, we're going to have to, you know, consider increasing the general fund contribution to this budget. I'm not sure that this is the year to do it, but, you know, I'm just, again, you know, trying to get it on your radar, because I know we've talked about it a couple times. You know, it always seems like we'll wait till next year to do it, and then next year comes around and you realize that it's, you know, that the economy in Connecticut, especially at the state level, is not recovering to the degree that we're getting any help from the state. But at some point in time, that fund balance is going to not be there to help support this budget if we keep drawing it down the way we are. Although this year, we had anticipated drawing it down by $19,000, almost $20,000, and we're probably not going to draw down any of them. That's one of the reasons why, you know, just because we have it budgeted for use doesn't necessarily mean that we actually end up using it. All right.
Okay. Any questions about the revenue side of the library?
So what you'll see when you go into your budget is you'll see, you know, inter-fund transfers, you know, out, which would be, you know, out of your budget into this budget. There's like $659,050 proposed, you know, from that, from the general fund. You won't see it on the expenditure side, you'll see it, you know, in your total budget, in your budget table. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, let's, before, are you going to make a motion?
I was.
Before we make motions and begin our work, is that the way the council would like to proceed as we go through each department? If we're satisfied with what we have, motion to approve, and then we'll move forward. If there are any departments where we're not certain and you want to hold out, we can do that as well. So if that's a good way to do it, you're all right with that? Okay. Would you want to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we fund Department 520 Library in the amount of $737,929.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
No. Let the motion reflect that that includes a general fund contribution of $659,050.
Do we, do you want a second motion or just your worst thing?
A little man-made motion?
Just did.
We've had two motions in the past.
Two motions.
Yeah, we've had two motions.
Okay, so I'm going to have a second motion. If the general fund contribution be $659,050, that would be the motion. We got to vote on this motion first, right?
We did.
We did? Okay. All right, then I will also move that we fund Department 520 Library looking at fund transfer in the amount of $659,050.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have Public Works, excuse me, John Bossy, and Director of Technical Services. We'll go through his budget. Budget, I should say. C6, Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is funded at $3,300, which is no change from the current fiscal year.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Okay. Sometime.
Are there any questions on this? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve 112, or Fund 112, in the amount of $3,300.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next item is the D12 Civil Preparedness. This proposes this budget be funded at $18,335, which is a 2 percent increase to the current year. This is, this goes, you know, we have a combined position, the Fire Marshal and the Civil Preparedness Director, $18,335. We generally get a grant that funds 50 percent of this, this particular line item. We separate it from the Fire Marshal's office because we have to show the state when we applied for the grant that this grant is going specifically towards the Civil Preparedness Director and not a combined position and those kinds of things. So that's why you'll see that his salary in two different spots.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 215 Civil Preparedness in the amount of $18,335.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is Technical Services Administration on page E15. It's recommended that this budget be funded at $171,715, which is a $12,630 increase or 7.94 percent. I would like to point out that the increase to the full-time, full-time account had to do with the elimination of Department 301, which was Physical Services Administration. And we brought a personnel, a person from Physical Services Administration over to Technical Services Administration, and that person was being paid at a higher salary line item than what we had in here. We had a, what we call an admin, we had funded that position at Admin 1 in his budget, but we brought over it at Admin 2, which was a person that was left over, so that's at a higher rate and had been with us a significantly longer period of time. So you'll see in 301 that there's a very significant decrease to that particular line item, and so that's because we don't have a 301 accounting.
And that's a one-time anomaly?
Well, you'd like it to be more than a one-time anomaly because it's saving us money, but yes.
No, no, it's an 8 percent increase I'm talking about.
Yeah, but it's the decrease more than makes up for the increase.
No, I, okay, I understand that. You lost it on one side. Yeah, okay. But on this, in this account?
Yes. Other than that, every other line item stays the same.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to fund Department 325 Technical Services and Administration in the amount of $171,715?
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is Engineering on page E17. Flip the page. It's recommended this budget be funded at $77,425, which is a $1,450 increase. It's a 1.91 percent increase. The only change is the full-time salary of 2 percent.
Madam Chair? Yes. Motion to approve Department 330 in the amount of $77,425. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is the Building Inspection, E19. Again, flip the page. It's recommended this budget be funded at $85,840, an increase of $1,550, 1.84 percent. The only change in the line items you see above is the full-time salary line item increasing by 2 percent.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve, I'm, excuse me, 360 Building Inspector in the amount of $85,840.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is the Fire Marshal at E21. This again is the second half of the, you know, Fire Marshal, Civil Preparedness Director. Recommended that the budget be funded at $72,080, which is an increase of $1,505 or 2.13 percent. Of the $1,505, $1,350 of it is the 2 percent increase to the salary line item and the, a slight increase of professional development of $155.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 370 Fire Marshal in the amount of $72,080.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
I'd like to go to the capital, capital account, AJ5, and we'll speak to the ones that relate to Technical Services Department, which would be on the right side of the page. I'm recommending that we fund, we continue to fund the roadway sign replacement program, which is a federal requirement that we change signs so that they reflect the new standards. We're doing that in a phased manner. We've discussed this in past years, and we have funded it in the past at $15,000. John has told me that they have spent all of this year, you know, the money that was allocated last year, so that, you know, in order to continue, there's nothing sitting in the bank, you know, that's, you know, so we're ready for the next round. A lot of it is new stop sign requirements, you know, that we have and whatnot.
Can it code street signs or just stop signs and...
Well, it could include street signs. Initially, we targeted stop signs because they're, you know, from a safety standpoint, they're the most important signs, but they, we would go from the regulatory signs, which are stop signs and speed signs and that stuff, to the cautionary signs, which are yellow signs, and then we could ultimately code street signs. I mean, nothing stops us. This isn't, this particular project, if you had a specific amount of street signs that you thought were, should be replaced, you could instruct us to... that you thought were, should be replaced, you could instruct us to purchase the street signs in lieu of a certain number of stop signs. It's your priority.
We did feel that, you know, going with the safety signs first was a higher priority, but somebody might say, you know, reading a street sign as four inch letters, three inch letters is a priority as well. The other item that I'm recommending be funded is the Northwest Drive Payment Restoration for $1 million, which we, you know, already have a grant in place for that, so, but the money has to be appropriated. I would point out that, you know, we do, you know, John had put in a request for the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge Project for $200,000. We do have $151,000 left in the Stillwell Drive Bridge Project, which is closed out. So we're going to ask the council at some point in time to transfer those dollars from this bridge, from that bridge project into this bridge project. We don't anticipate that this will be ready to go in the next fiscal year, in fiscal year 18, probably won't be till fiscal year 19, that we'll be ready to move forward, hopefully. So there's no need to fund anything in next year's budget, but we would like to at least close out Stillwell Drive and put it into Tomlinson, so that the requests going forward will be, you know, not as significant. We do have $60,000 in the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge Project from a previous appropriation. All right, so that's the reason why, you know, we're not recommending funding for that. A couple of other line items there as well, that John asked for, I just, in looking at the priorities, as I see them, I, you know, I did not recommend it be funded in the next fiscal year.
So this dial-a-ride, doesn't look like there's funding for dial-a-rides, so does that mean that that would, that service would go away?
Well, dial-a-ride is on the human services, which wouldn't be in the John's area, but what it is, is we just bought the new van that came in this year.
Yeah.
What Sean has done in the past is that's $5,000 a year for five years.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, so she likes to save up $5,000 a year, I'm just saying that, you know, we could put $25,000 in the fifth year, we could put $5,000 in every year.
Okay, I see. All right, thank you forever.
So it doesn't mean we're not funding the dial-a-ride deal.
Okay.
So that was all, we'll hit the rest, we'll hit the rest of the capital projects as we go through the, as we go through the different departments and whatnot. Technical Services is item nine, well, we hit item 10 at the same time, it was a short one.
Okay.
All right. I would point out that the downtown sidewalk reglazing and sealing, you know, needs to be done at some point in time, that's the red, you know, area, so, you know, it's getting to the point where it probably should be done, just, no, in my opinion, not next year.
Do we have any questions about capital, that department? Okay, we'll continue on with the rest of it.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
We'll go to Public Works, Technical Services Administration, E3. We basically had two people as part of this department, one was Carmen and the other one was Chris Aldy. We transferred Chris Aldy over to the Technical Services Administration, that's where you saw that increase, and we eliminated Carmen's salary out of this Physical Services Administration. So basically, what you're seeing is a $112,000, $112,700 decrease, because we're just eliminating the Physical Services Administration. We've reallocated some staff, and you'll see some increases in other areas, but overall, it's a decrease with this reallocation.
Do we have to do anything with this, or just to show that we approved all that moving around, essentially no longer in existence, correct?
Correct. I mean, it's probably better to make an appropriation and make it zero, and then next year you won't see it at all, assuming we don't budget anything in it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 301 Physical Services Administration in the amount of zero.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is Roadways, E5.
Dominic.
Recommending that this budget be funded at $910,790, which is an increase of $12,519, or 1.39%. Hope that's a one. I got a line going through, sorry for me to read that. It's a 1.39%, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
$910,790.
Yes. You'll see an increase in the salary, full-time salary line item of 2%. Recommending that we increase the overtime, regular overtime by $10,000. Mostly because we've historically gone over because of leaves, that isn't dependent on whether, you know, a leaf program, and the regular overtime has historically gone over, and so, in fact, we're recommending, we're seeing that we spent $97,000 last year, we're expecting to spend about $95,000 next year, so I think we need to bump that up a little bit. Some of it is part of the, is part of the road bond program, where we're doing some overtime there as well, so I'm recommending that we bump, at least bump it up by $10,000. Overtime snow, I've recommended that we, it's a good time to be talking about snow, I guess, but, he had, he had actually requested $50,000 that we bumped this up. I kept it at the same level, you'll see where, we did, we did some analysis, Rob did some analysis below, as far as what some of the average years have been for snow. Five-year average is about $40,000. The three-year average is $54,000, so you see that below, so, you know, where the last three has been a little bit higher, but over the five-year period, it's been about $40,000, so. We were running a little bit under this year, I'm not sure what, what tomorrow will bring.
But I am, I'm preparing, I'm coding everything for tomorrow through the storm damage account, which will be female reimbursed, is my assumption. If we don't get a state declaration of emergency, it'll go back into this account. So the reason the two obvious in the five-year plan are lower is because we did get the female reimbursed in three years, otherwise it would be substantially higher.
How much do we usually get for those, or does it depend?
No, it's all storm dependent. It's usually a 48-hour window, so I'll ask the department heads which 40 hours, or 24 to 48 hours, depending on what the declaration is. So I'll ask the department heads which 24 or 48-hour period is most, you know, that we use it, and I calculate everything, we get 75% back to the total cost, usually.
We have an increase in other contractual, which is some increased requirements under our MS4 permit. They've changed some rules as far as testing is concerned. And we have a decrease of $15,000 in maintenance contracts, that's basically the maintenance of the LED, of the streetlights, the LED streetlights. You know, that, we were maintaining the old streetlights under this, this account. We have some monies in other areas to cover this, but it is, it is a reduction to maintenance to begin with, so. So the total budget again is a 1.39% increase.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 305 Roadways in the amount of $910,790.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Next, Department is Buildings and Grounds.
Do we want to do the capital for Roadways, Robert?
Yeah, we can do that.
Or Dominic?
Hey, John. I think we should wait.
He knows where you live.
I don't forget.
Roadways, for this particular year, asked for one item, which is the JCB Loader/Pacco. This is something that had been in the five-year plan for several years now, and I'd like Dominic to just give a brief explanation of why he feels he needs this piece of equipment, and then answer any question you might have with regards to this thing.
We bought this machine in the year 2000, and this is 2017, so we kind of got the best 17 years on the life of the machine, without any major breakdowns, any costs that we had to incur by rebuilding any engines or hydraulic pumps, and I feel that it's time for the machine to go. We've been doing a lot of digging in regards to our road bond program, with catch bases and a lot of other activities that's been going around town, and we've got the best years out of the machine, and it's time to trade it in and get another one. They're going to give us about $20,000, I'm going to try to squeeze them for another five for training value on the machine. So we've done good over the 17 years of having this, the life of this machine, so it's time to trade it in and get another one, because we got a lot more digging there. That machine's used pretty much every day, summertime, springtime, fall, it's a little breakdown deep season, but winter season, we're using them, you know, I mean, we've been doing a lot of work, so it's, I don't want no breakdowns, and I don't want to spend any foolish money that we don't have to spend, so.
So the 25 will offset the 115?
No, I believe the cost is higher than that, so.
Yeah, it's about 125, 120, with a little extra attachments, but I got to work on a little, so, you know, we got a secure number on what we're going to get.
I guess if you're going to get 25, what's your net number that you need? Do you need 115 as a?
Yeah, I like to have that, so we, you know, so we got a little cushion. Because the new motors coming through now, we've got additional cost, that's about $8,000 because of the Tier 4 motors for the emissions, so they keep increasing every year because of the emissions program and that big motor.
So the 25, you need the 25 for other things?
Well, you know, that's, that's about the book value of the machine to trade it in. So I'm going to get a little different machine, a little bigger, a little more attachments with it, so.
That would give you a budget of 140.
Well, yeah, I think, what we carry, 115, that'd be good. That's a secure number.
Do you think it'll last another year? I'm not making any general statements, I'm just questioning you while you're here, so we don't have to ask you at another time.
I can make it last another year.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't have it, you know, we'll get by, but I'm just saying.
Right, but in your opinion, is it in a state of failure where you couldn't use it, or is it, you're just being proactive about, well, it's getting older, so we need to think about this particular thing?
No, I mean, you know, we don't know what kind of surprise, everything you look at on equipment is a $5,000 bill, $3,000, you know. You know, if I got to, if I got to work another year, we will, I mean, we'll get everything working.
Couple of things, is one, is when it goes down, then, you know, it's, because we use it so often, it impacts, you know, our, our ability to get certain things done until we get it fixed, or we have to go out and rent another one. You know, we don't, we don't have a backup.
Do you, I know, in the event that does happen, you know, and you're in the midst of a project, are there ways for you to lease one of these from some major equipment company that might have one, or no?
Yeah, I got enough, we can rent whatever you need, so, I just don't want to get into that.
Yeah.
And there's plenty of contractors that I can call, too, so, to bail me out.
Okay.
In your opinion, you feel that, you know, now you can get 20 or 25,000 for it, which, you know, if you do have a major issue with it, and that could potentially be gone.
No, the thing is, you know, iron's tough thing, and you know, it's a gamble.
Sure.
And I'm just feeling that, you know, we've got the best years out of it, so.
Okay.
Do you think we have to go another year? Well, you know, I'll make it work, I'll make anything work.
Sure. Well, I know, and there's a cost to all making that work, if things happen, things break down, and everybody knows that, that's part of, part of the program, you know. All right, well, I was just curious if this is like, do we merge it, or if it's like, we need to get it done pretty soon?
If we really need to get it done, I'd let you know that we really need to get it done.
Okay.
To me, it's an attractive option.
Okay.
I got one more question. If, you know, if the thing did break down, you lose out on the 20,000 that it's worth, you know, how long before you can have a new one delivered, you know, if it ever came down to that? You mean, they have them in stock, and you really have to order them a month at a time?
Usually in a municipality, you have to order them, because they get, we got a special funding.
Yeah, because you're not buying it at market value, really, it's under.
And they'll build it, because you get the special incentives, because it is the municipality government.
All right, does anybody have any more questions for Dominic and his requests? Okay, thanks very much, and stay safe tomorrow.
Stay home tomorrow. Good night, everyone.
Next is Buildings and Grounds, E7. Recommending a budget of $977,660, which is a decrease of almost $35,000, or minus This has to do with the reduction in a position. We had a position that was funded, it's an HVAC position. Well, let me, let me talk about at least a couple of other items. The other contractual is an increase of $1,650 under other contractual. That has to do with a, a deep requirement, Department of Energy and Environment Protection, and the maintenance contracts. We have the major increase, the elevator contract, or the increase is, is because of the elevator contract, the $2,200 are, you know, most of that increase, so we have some increases in maintenance contracts. That one is primarily due to the elevator. You know, with regards to the HVAC position, it is vacant now, and I didn't, I didn't fill the position in the current fiscal year because of what we're facing as far as the budget going forward. Dave Emery did write to me a, an email back in January, the end of January, when we talked about this position, and what I'd like to do is at least bring you up to speed on, at least give Dave the opportunity to explain to you why he feels this position should be funded. With that in mind, hopefully there's enough of those going on. Sorry, it's Dave. I did talk to Dave about whether he had somebody, you know, on staff that could actually do the HVAC position and eliminate, you know, lower-level positions, so that, you know, but I don't think you have anybody capable.
No, we don't have anybody with the skills, equally would be required for the position in-house at this point.
So, you know, I think that, you know, I think Dave makes a good case, it's just a tough decision to think to be made, and, you know, certainly if the council was going to reduce a budget somewhere and free up some funds, you know, certainly this would be one of the priorities that I would say, you know, add back in, but. the priorities that I would say, you know, add back in, but, you know.
I would also add to what you've read, that this would be the second position in approximately five years that was not funded. If you were not to fund it, we had a reduction through retirement, where someone retired, I think it was approximately five years ago. And that certainly gave some deficiencies on the maintenance side of our operation. This would hurt on the maintenance side more than anything else, although the second position certainly, as I mentioned, would be a big help as far as filling in for mowing and different jobs that require, you know, vacations happening, sick time happening, and weather happening. That becomes, that becomes key during, during the season, during the growing season anyways. But also snow plowing and such events, and we could really use the guy tomorrow, but I don't think we can get him that fast. But that's the best I could, I felt, you know, I guess some of the need for that position to be maintained. And certainly I feel that, you know, some of the infrastructure in this town is hurting to a degree, it's not things you see every day, because it's building infrastructure, mechanical equipment, you know, that this person would be covering. And I would really like, I think we can all be proud of, you know, some of the buildings and grounds that we have in this town and the way they're taken care of by everyone. And I would hate to see that suffer in the long term, you know, I understand budgetary concerns, certainly. And we will do the best we can with whatever we have for resources, but I think it would be, it would be kind of a disservice to not maintain this infrastructure to the level that it has been maintained, and, you know, certainly you can use contractors and things like that, but that gets more expensive over time. It would increase over time without a full-time position available with department personnel.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Dave, is this a licensed HVAC person?
It doesn't have to be, my idea, the guy I have currently is licensed. It doesn't require a license to do that. Licensing is required for purchases of free, that type of thing, you know, chemicals, but it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be, as long as the skills are there, is really what we, and experience is there.
So this position does more than just HVAC work, right?
Correct.
You're saying they do other types of tasks, or whatever you need to have done?
Yep, and being a skilled position, a person usually can easily help the electrician, the carpenter, other tasks that require grounds work, as I mentioned, that person really becomes a jack-of-all-trades if they weren't already, but their primary focus would be the HVAC plumbing work. That's really where I need the primary help from that person in that position. But that, you know, it's, we've really increased a lot of equipment as, you know, buildings, grounds, all that, since, since we've actually had two people on the list. Ernie, who was the former person in that position, was brought on when the pool was built in 1996, as I mentioned, and that was, that was a big increase right there in the amount of work required by plumber, essentially, or some of the knowledge of plumbing. And then irrigation systems and everything else, the increase in improvements, and it really, really has increased the workload, and the preventive maintenance is what we primarily do, but that suffers when you can't get to it when you have other repairs, and it kind of snowballs down the road. It'll, it'll get to a point eventually where you really have to bring in outside help, or it's just going to cost a lot more money to maintain the things that we're currently maintaining.
I have a question, I don't know if it's more for Robert or Rob, when you do have to hire outside contractors, where is that funded through? You know, how is that, if you do have to make repairs, that requires outside contractors?
Well, we would probably do it under either other contractual, which is 52, 435. But we've.
475 as well.
Yep, 52, 475, which is buildings and grounds repair. But I can tell you, a lot of those dollars are already spoken for. We have the line item created, but we, you know, we, there isn't enough money in there to cover.
In future years, you'd probably go over that particular line item.
So are you suggesting we reverse the reduction?
I think it's, I think it's needed, you know, I think that's.
Or you've reduced it, right?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, not that I have a problem with it, I just want to.
What I would recommend at this point in time is that you table this one, and let's go through the rest of the budget, and then, and then see where we hit the, kind of make a decision at the end, that's what I would recommend.
Well, thank you for your consideration on that item.
Thanks for writing up your, you know, support of why you need things done.
Sometimes I've ignored my thoughts a little more.
I think there's, you know, some reasons to maybe wait till the end of all of what we have to do. There are other requests for additional staffing on your budget object, but there are some others that we need to, maybe get through the whole thing and then decide where we're going to go.
Fair enough. Thank you.
We go to, we can do this capital item for building the grounds now, since Dave is here, which is on J4 and J5. Dave asked for a variety of projects to be funded. I'm recommending two. Recommending a four-wheel-drive pickup truck, number 45, for $26,000. And a library window trim repair and paint, $10,000. I think we have some money put away for that already, so.
Yes.
So this would allow you to do that project next year?
In its entirety.
In its entirety. I would like to point out that he, he had asked for municipal center fire alarm upgrade. It is, you know, it is old, it is, it's still working.
Parts are becoming harder to come by for that particular system. It's a high voltage system, that's supposed to everything is low voltage these days. It's really going to, if something, if some critical part were to fail in that system, we'd be faced with, with doing this work regardless of the credit funds, that's why I proposed it. But there are aging systems as well in town, but this is probably the most critical.
So I just want you to know that we are making decisions that are, you know, that are not easy decisions to make, and trying to stretch things out as long as possible, so. But, you know, just wanted you to, when you see municipal center fire alarm upgrade, I wanted you to know, you know, what the situation was. It is working right now, parts are getting harder, you know, could it go another year? Maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
Win another year this year, you know, or at least win out through the whole year.
It's gone 40, so.
So this is the original fire alarm?
This is the original.
Well, it's tested anyway, right? I mean, you.
Tested regularly.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Then to ask about the pickup truck, that is a replacement?
Yes.
And how old is the one?
1995, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Is the year we're replacing?
It's Truck 45.
Truck 45 is the number, yeah. And it's probably one of the worst condition, vehicles in the worst condition in the fleet right now, it's pretty much falling apart.
It's had a lot of repairs?
It's had quite a few repairs and needs more, trying to hold off on, because they're going to be major.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, good.
We're good?
Thank you again for your consideration.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with that. Next is municipal building maintenance, E9. Recommending a budget of $1,502,600, which is a decrease of $31,058 or minus 2.03%. We are seeing decreases in heating oil, seeing decreases in gasoline and diesel, these are numbers that Rob tells me were locked in at this point in time?
Yes, the.
Okay, differential on one, I think.
Right, the gas can pay differential right now, it's just better than the lock-in rate. And the diesel and heating oil, we just, the bid just concluded and got our results, and it meets where our budgetary estimates were, and it's actually lower than what we were paying this year. So it was a good bid process.
You know, and we, you know, we reviewed our usage and whatnot, and, you know, the gallons and whatnot, and we feel comfortable with, you know, the estimate of gallons and, you know, so. We feel comfortable enough to have a decrease in this, in this budget by $31,000.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 315 municipal building maintenance in the amount of $1,500, $1,502,600.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next item is the motor vehicle and equipment pool, E11. Recommending a budget of $135,260, which is the current year's amount, so no increase. Under repairs and maintenance, you'll see where we, you know, under repairs and maintenance and equipment repair and maintenance, while those numbers look high in terms of what it says spent to date, 77,113, it's kind of a misnomer, because mostly that's made up of encumbrances, where they encumber certain dollars for certain vendors. Spent to date actually, you know, so we include encumbrances as spent to date, but actual spent to date for repair and maintenance is, under repair and maintenance, $29,000, a little bit, right around $29,000, so we are running, you know, we're having a pretty good year in maintenance. We would close out those encumbrances if we didn't use them, so. And under equipment repair and maintenance, where it says 29,684 encumbered, to date we spent about $16,000, so we feel pretty comfortable that, that those numbers are going to come in, you know, no more than what, where the budget stands right now. So we've, you know, this is a tough, a tough thing to measure, because it's, you know, you can have major, you know, major issues with aging equipment, you know, this year has been a pretty good year so far. I wouldn't recommend you change it and lower it, you know, you can see where, for example, in, in fiscal year 16, we spent $122,000 in repair and maintenance. But we only spent $12,000 in equipment repair and maintenance, you know, so, so you're under in one, but over in another, so it really depends on, you know, what happens to go. I do know that, that, you know, both Public Works and Buildings and Grounds does a good job of keeping their equipment in pretty decent shape, and I'm pretty proud of that. I think the towns should be pretty proud of the way our equipment's been maintained over the years.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I approve the, I move that we approve 320 motor vehicle and equipment pool, the amount of $135,260.
Second.
There are motion in a second, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is the transfer station, E13. Budget is being recommended is $74,423, which is an increase of $1,123 or 1.53%. We see a slight increase in the salary line item, it's an hourly person that works part-time for us on Saturdays, and other contractual slight increase as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 323 transfer station in the amount of $74,423.
Second. Any motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item I have is water pool control, which is on page J19. Again, this is an enterprise fund. Recommended budget of $3,365,246, which is a decrease of $154,455, minus 4.39%. Joe was very quick to point out to me earlier today when we had a conversation, that in the five years that he's been here, the four previous years, first year he was here, the budget was decreased by 3.84%. Second year it increased by 1.62%, third year by 0.96%, and the fourth year minus 4.39%. And, well, this is the fourth year, so I just wanted to point out that you're running under budget than what you've got here.
Yes.
Okay. You see some, some decreases in full-time salary, mostly because we had some of Carmen's salary that came out of here. You know, we funded him, you know, partially out of here, this as well, so that, so you get a 2% increase when you take out, you know, we're going towards Carmen, that decreases that line item. And then you can see, you know, some slight increases in work versus compensation, some decreases in heating oil and gasoline, which you saw in previous budgets. We see a decrease in improvements. And you have our principal and interest in there as far as our, what we owe for debt So that's pretty much the budget. If you flip the page, we have the revenue side, which reports that. We have some increases on the revenue side in interest, which is interest on people who don't pay their bills online. We felt that we could, we could bump that up a little bit, based upon what we've experienced over the last couple of years. In collecting fees, you know, we've gone after some people that have been living for a while, so, you know, I don't think it's a trend that less people are paying their bills, it's just that we're getting more, we're able to catch up on some of the ones that are greatly, which includes some of the, you know, auctions, you know, tax auction sales that we've had where we've collected sewer at the same time. So I think we're in, you know, fairly decent shape on the revenue side as well, but the recommended expenditure budget again is still a minus 4.39% decrease, a decrease of 4.39%.
Could you just explain what the decrease in capital outlay improvements is from or for, why is that down, going down? There's 112,000.
Well, there's, that makes up several line, several line items, you know, several, Joe, perhaps you can detail them.
There's a chart here. Yeah, I didn't know, did you want to review the capital project? Could I talk about, probably just talk about now? Right, that's what that is.
Yeah, be in the capital.
Okay, we'll wait till that.
Probably the capital, I just figured you were going to bring that up.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll wait till then. Just wondering, because it's, factors into the bottom line here.
Yeah. We can go to it now if you'd like.
All right.
In this particular instance, the water pool control is in, is in the five-year budget, which is.
L12.
Now, L12 does not have fiscal year 17.
You're better off looking at page LE.
LE?
Correct. Numbers are a little small here, but there's a lot of information there. Includes the current year 17 funding, which is in the yellow column.
Which page is that?
LE.
So we're currently funding it at 259,000.
Yes.
Which is INI Van Hooft rehabilitation, $10,000, recommending that we spend $15,000 this, next year. Plant and collection system improvements, repairs, we have, this is when there's a break in line and whatnot, you know, we have contractor come in in many instances and assist us in making those repairs. 125,000 we budgeted each year, so I'm recommending that we continue to budget 25,000. The influent valve replacement for 25,000, we're done with that project, so we don't need to buy any more influent valves.
We're done, it's actually going to be, we will be done in two weeks.
We have, yeah, we have the money funded for it. Yeah, yeah. We've completely funded. The treatment plant roof repair for $87,000, that's done, we repaired the roof, so we don't need to do another roof repair next year. And we purchased a small utility vehicle in the current fiscal year for $12,000, so, that's a one-time purchase. I'm also recommending that we, that we appropriate $7,000 for Woodford Avenue Milling. There's some old sewer lines that have sunk, and he's, and Joe is going to work with, with roadways to, to mill that particular section, and then roadways will come in and, you know, and pave that over, so we get rid of the depression that's in the road, this happens about once every 10 years. This happens about once every ten years. It's a relatively deep trench that has wooden shoring that's, that decays over time.
It's cheaper to fix it every once, every ten years than it is to actually fix it.
I would point out that Joe did ask for a crane truck replacement for seventy-eight thousand dollars. I'm not recommending that it be, that it be funded this year. We've talked about backup. The existing crane truck, the crane that's on it was a, what year is that?
It's nineteen-ninety-eight.
She used to pull, primarily to pull pumps out of the pump stations?
Yes, it's a, it's a multi-purpose vehicle. It was originally purchased for pump station repairs and for plowing, so it had a plow and had a utility body in the back. At some point they decided they were going to mount a crane on the back of it so that they could pull the pumps out of the stations. However, the truck was never meant to have a crane on it, so the rear axles and the suspension in the back is in, doesn't support the weight when you try to pull a pump out, especially out of, mostly out of Mountain View and Shuttle Meadow, which are probably the heaviest pumps they have. And the truck is in need of a lot of work. I can tell you it won't be plowing tomorrow because it only plows one way. The bed is so rotted that I've stopped spending money as far as fixing it. I just, to me, it's putting good money into a bad investment. So I suggested that, you know, the vehicle should be replaced, the downwind vehicle should be replaced with a vehicle that has multiple uses, which has the two boxes in the back for all the station equipment, but also have a plow on the front and a rear end that was built to accommodate a crane as well as a new crane that's capable of hoisting the, in, hoisting the motors out of the pump stations.
You know, there are, you know, the, the use of the crane for the pump station work is sporadic. It isn't an everyday type of item. There are, you know, other options, not as convenient options, which is, you know, just grabbing the truck, it may mean that you, that you have to get a hold of roadways for them to bring a piece of equipment out to, to assist in that. There are some areas, there are some pump stations where that really wouldn't be feasible, and he may have to bring in a subcontractor to, to do that. But I would like to evaluate using that, that system for a year, so that could sit there and say, well, you know, the payoff on something like this would be, you know, seventy-eight thousand seems like it might be a lot of dollars, but we're spending ten thousand dollars a year for this type of work, or, you know, something along those lines. Joe has, you know, warned me that, you know, he has to have sufficient backup, so if he calls a crane company and they're not available, he has another crane company he didn't call, you know, so, you know, you can't have a pump station issue. Most of the pump stations have, all of the pump stations have backup pumps. One pump goes down, need to pull it out, fix it, while the other pump continues to pump. If two pumps go down, then you really, then you really need to.
You're up.
You're up, you're up that tree. Robert and I have spoken about this lately, you know, and I'll try not to be long about it, but as a superintendent, I concern myself with a couple of things, and one is obviously cost. And I agree seventy-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money, but the other thing that I have to concern myself with is the consequences, how I spend my money. So while seventy-eight thousand dollars seems like a lot of money, if there was a catastrophic event and I couldn't get a crane there and we didn't have one, that seventy-eight thousand dollars to me would be seven dollars and a cent, because the consequences of not having the equipment that you need far outweigh the cost of the equipment that you need. So they, I mean, there is a, there is a vehicle that I'm not willing to spend any money on. It needs a plow repair, it needs brakes, it needs a rear end, it needs, it needs springs. So if I was just to replace the vehicle and got a vehicle with a plow, it would cost somewhere in the thirty, thirty-five thousand dollar range. So then I have to ask myself, well, for, you know, another thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, I can get a vehicle that's a little bit larger and serve that purpose of having that crane available when I need the crane. We needed a crane last week. We called Baxter Crane, called them at ten o'clock on, I believe it was Wednesday, and they were able to get there by eight o'clock on Thursday. We managed to get through the night, that's a great thing. But, you know, and I have no problems with looking at all the different options, but all of those options take away the one thing that's most important to me as a superintendent, and that's the ability to respond to avoid a consequence that I don't want to have happen. So I, this is not the first year that we've, I've asked for the vehicle and, you know, until it gets funded, it won't be the last year, because as a superintendent, it's my responsibility to keep coming back to you and saying, look, I need to have a crane truck. I need to figure out a way for us to get a crane truck. Initially, the first year here, the crane truck was actually specked out by roadways, it was under forty thousand dollars. We went and re-spec our own out and bought what, you know, sort of put together what we thought was the bare minimum that we need, which brought down seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that's not as big a truck as the original one that was scoped out, we didn't need one that big. So I think that, you know, we'll continue to, to work on it till it, till the money's available to fund it, but I suspect that I'm going to keep asking. I tell you, both agree and Robert's comfortable with it, we'll just keep asking.
Well, I'm certainly comfortable with the request. Again, I do want to point out that, you know, we don't just pass everything along to the town council. I mean, we make tough decisions before it gets here, you know. You know, Joe says he needs it, okay, but he didn't need it this year. You know, he's able to get by, and, you know, what we hear sometimes is, you know, can he get by? And, yeah, there's, there's potential consequences to it. And, you know, you heard what some of those potential consequences might be, but, you know, but, you know, we've gotten by, so. However, I would point out that if you, if you did want to include that, it would still be a decrease in the water push control authority budget.
Our list is getting longer.
Well, you know. I don't know what's easier for you. I don't know if it's easier for me to include it in there and then you reduce it, or whether it's better to, you know, to have these types of, you know, lengthier discussions about, you know, about.
Well, you know, we all know that we're looking at a vast unknown by the time we finish up this whole budget and where we're going to end up at this day and all of those things. So it puts a little uncertainty on, on some of these things that we're looking at this year, in a year that we didn't have such a circumstance. But the solutions are simpler, they're just more difficult this year. We just need to understand the impact of everything that we end up doing.
So if you want to take a pass on this one and give some thought to it, we can take it up.
I would like to take a pass.
Yep.
That was it. Thank you, Grandma.
Thank you.
Thank you. C-35.
Weighed on the list.
C-35. And then with the capital items that was taken out as well. The data processing budget is proposed at two-hundred-and-twelve thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, which is an increase of eleven thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars or five-point-nine-two percent. What you see is an increase in full-time salary of two percent. That's basically Shirley, Shirley's salary?
Yes.
You'll see a slight decrease in other contractual, but you see an increase in maintenance contracts. That's basically in one, two, three, five areas. Admins, which is our accounting software, is an increase of nine hundred dollars for the current year. Microsoft three-sixty-five, we see going up by three thousand three hundred dollars. Virtual Town Hall, which is our website, our new website, that we have, we have a maintenance contract on that, that we didn't have last year, three thousand dollars. Server licenses, fifteen hundred dollars. Internet filtering, twenty-two hundred dollars. I don't pretend to know all that there is as it relates to internet filtering, server licenses, and Microsoft three-sixty-five, and that's one of the reasons why Kevin is here, if you have any questions with regards to that.
Would take my hat. If you want to tell us what it is, it'd be great. I have no clue.
Office three-sixty-five is our, you know, we fixed the email system from a few years ago. We were in a three-year contract with locked-in pricing, we're coming at the end of that. This was, you know, four months ago when we got the pricing budgetary number. It should come in, hopefully, under that slightly, but that was the best number they could give me at the time. Right now Dell holds the state contract with Microsoft, so we're working through Dell on that. The internet filtering licenses, we have a filtering solution, and that's our yearly subscription to the filter, basically, to pay for continuous warranty and maintenance on the device. If it breaks, they'll send us something in twenty-four hours. What was the other one?
The server licensing?
Server licensing, we're looking to upgrade the servers and we need to buy licenses for it. Right now we're still running two thousand and eight, or three, on one server. One is eight when a server, we're putting them as part of the capital, you may have seen, or we haven't got to that yet, is one server for the cluster that is hosted at the high school. So they have to pay for the town's licensing is separate from the educational licensing, different pricing, but we can put it on the same hardware, so we're basically getting better pricing at the hardware level because it's in, it's housed at a school, but we can't use the licensing, so. And that lasts, that's not yearly, that's a one-time purchase for at least four, three to four months.
Just Madam Chair?
Yes.
Because I was going to ask, so you really need to prorate some of these things because you're doing, you're being used on both the, you know, some of them are being used on both the board and town?
That was separated out. That was enough licensing to cover the servers that we will house on the, basically, the school-town cluster that we have. It's a four-server, four servers work together with a shared amount of storage, and we built this at the, the school system built it, we're looking to replace the servers this year. We need, we're moving from a box that we have had running for about six years here, we're going to move all that onto this cluster, which allows for high availability. If one server has to be shut down or fails, it moves automatically to another box, so it, and then we also have backup running off of that, and try to keep it simple, I don't want to get too.
So you have the redundancy.
Yes, it's, yeah, much more redundancy, a lot more, a lot easier for maintenance for us as well.
So we're basically purchasing one of the servers in the schools carrying three?
Three, yeah.
So that's why one of them is in here.
That's right, yeah, so that, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you combine these, these as one system.
Correct.
That's why we split it up.
Yeah. We're looking to do some police backups through there. We're looking, we have the, we're separating how we're trying to build better functionality. We moved the firehouse server already to it, so we're moving, so basically for one box that we would buy, we're moving three servers, physical servers, and then spreading those services out that are running on those in a better form, better functionality. Right now, there's one box that's running so many things here at Town Hall, if that box were to fail, there'd be, there'd be a lot of problems, so.
Now, and the internet filtering, is that just for the town side that's budgeted here?
Correct, we have a separate filter.
Right, so it goes through C E N?
The networks are separate, yeah.
Through C E N still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Do you have any questions for Kevin?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to fund Department one-fifty-five in the amount of two-hundred-and-twelve thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
Second. There are a motion in the second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We can go to the capital budget, which is, I think that'll show on the J-four. Data processing upgrades and equipment aggregate, thirty thousand dollars, of which some of that includes a server?
It's all in one, yes.
And the green Wi-Fi, which is our, which is our.
Streetlights.
Streetlights, the internet.
Oh. Does that work yet?
It's, it's, it's still got some bugs in it that we're trying to work out, but it is up, not up a hundred percent.
Yeah, I don't know anybody that's been able to use it, so, but we're paying for it, right?
We're not paying for it yet.
No.
Oh, okay.
The.
We're not paying for it yet.
The company gave us nine thousand dollars, which is essentially ten months' worth of rebate as part of the grant or process of what, of doing this. So we're still using that money per se. So the cost is nine hundred bucks a month, and you'll see that ninety-four thirty-five, it doesn't cover a full year, so even in two thousand and eighteen, we'll still use the remaining piece of that nine thousand dollars to get us to where we need to budget ninety-four thirty-five for the entire next year.
They're bringing some people in to try to balance the system. It's, it's not an easy, and I know that Kevin's has some conversations with them as well.
Yeah.
You know, you have to work out where there's other areas that are interfering with this, with these signals as well, as I understand it's not an easy problem, easy issue to balance out, but they feel confident. They have statistics that show that there are people that are, that are logged in and used it, you know, based upon what they see from their usage.
There's definitely, there's spots, there's some issues with certain units and certain, some receivers that are having problems, they're needing to reset, so that's one thing. And then there's still a whole section that has to be built out, and hopefully that built out is done, will balance everything. That was hoping to be done sooner than later, but we're waiting on that. There's a subcontractor basically is holding the works up, it's not, not us or the, like the company that we were working with, it's their subcontractor unfortunately, so.
But meanwhile, we're not paying.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, the equipment's in place, and, you know, like I've been in them and I've been able to get into it and look at, there are, you know, a lot of phones have grabbed on and seems to work better down this way than down that way. Not sure why. It's a tough, it's a tough, tough thing. We don't have, we don't have a lot of, we can't go real high with top antennas because of the airport, and so that makes line of sight a little harder to work pretty flat too, so, you know, trees are higher than most of our telephone poles and lights, so hopefully we'll get it figured out, so.
There's still some lights that need to be installed, and they're on order, and, you know, they were supposed to be at the end of February. Didn't come as expected.
We have one day, they came, put the antenna up on the high school side, so we have another heart sending ports through ten. So they'll be able to shoot that way, and hopefully that will, that is going as well when those lights come in. I'd like to end a little over there.
Other questions for Kevin, we'll leave here for data processing? Okay. Do we have anything else that he needs to do for us tonight?
Probably have on the cap.
Yeah, that must be them for everything.
Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday, right?
Thursday.
What was that?
Board of Ed's coming back for all the stuff Thursday.
Yeah, Board of Ed's coming back in Thursday. Supposed to come in tomorrow, we've canceled that.
Oh. We'll see how Thursday is too. All right, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm not sure, you, you want to do a motion on data processing?
We already did.
We did it.
Did it?
Yeah.
All right. The last, the next item is the police department. The chief court is top aide Eddie LaPage here tonight, in case you didn't.
Eddie is the body doctor.
Well, I'm not sure, it could be the other way around sometimes. Police is on page D-four. Recommended budget totals, four million. Recommended budget totals, $4,106,618, which is an increase of $47,888 or 1.18%. Personnel is an increase of 1.52%, which is $50,462. There's a lot of moving parts with personnel, people leaving at higher salaries, coming in at lower salaries, but Rob and the chief go through that, and so, based upon the best available, available information they have today, this is what they're estimating the, full-time salary to be. It does not include any additional police officers, does not decrease the number of police officers that we funded in the current fiscal year. Right now, we are 30, that's, that's 37 certified staff. We have one opening right now that we think we might be filling within the next 30 days. Bringing in a recommendation to the council. If everything works out the way we planted it, and we've had some conversations, I believe, with council members, it'll be somebody who's certified already, so that the, so that the delay in having them fully trained is greatly decreased as a result of that. Somebody who's working in another department, so. We're not at liberty to say who that is yet.
So that would be 38, you're saying?
No, that'd be 37. We've funded 37, we have 36 appointed right now.
Got it, okay. And does that make you fully, okay, fully staffed? 37. 37.
See some decrease in the part-time salary. Now, does this, does this increase a dispatcher?
No, we're still with six, Robert.
Okay, six dispatchers. Did we end up changing that one line item?
Which line item?
The maintenance contract?
Yes.
We did? These are a new sheet? Well, we have 20, 2419 increase? Was that cameras?
That is correct, yeah. You can see the request was 45, 125, so 6,000 higher.
Okay. Maintenance contract, you'll see where you requested 45, we funded it at 39. We thought you might ask that question, what it is, is, we had, we had the in-car cameras, we had it funded in two spots, so we, we took it out of this, we found that before we got it to you, so we figured I'd try to answer that question before, before you asked it. But that's pretty much it. You have some overtime analysis down below. We're not recommending any change in the, the funding for overtime this year. We've, we've covered it in the past with unassigned fund balance or an additional appropriation. We've done some transfers at the end of the year if we had some, if we had some available, available funds from other accounts. However, you know, being fully staffed and, and bringing in some people that were already certified, we're hopefully that will have a better, a better handle on, on overtime next year, although, you know, it's, you never know when somebody's going to leave or retire or...
A jury or sick.
Yeah.
Certified staff helps, I mean, get them up and running a lot faster, the field training's a lot shorter. Costs us a lot less money to get them out on, out on the street.
True.
Do we have any officers close to retirement at this time? I mean...
Mr. Chad, there's probably two or three people who could go at any time. I'm not anticipating that.
Right.
We're not getting that feedback, but we're aware of it.
Yeah, okay.
For some reason, those who are planning retirement keep, play those cards close to the vest.
Yeah, and unfortunately, in our current situation, especially one or two of the people that come to mind quickly are key players in the organization, so I'm not looking to taste the process.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'll make a motion to fund Department 201 Police in the amount of $4,106,618.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
K-9 Control, next one at page D6. Recommendation is a, is a total of $81,077, an increase of $3,311 or 4.26%. Full-time salary, we have increasing by 5.79%. I'll have Rob explain why that's the case, I think we had some...
This was the new hire, and then the probationary period ends, the 2% increase that's, you know, budgeted plus the staff plus, you know, probationary period, I think, so a combination of all of that.
And that's covered under a unit contract?
That's correct.
Rest is flat.
Rest is flat, yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department 205 K-9 Control in the amount of $81,077. Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is Emergency Medical Services. Recommendation is a, is for $15,294, which is an increase of $550 or 3.73%. This is, this has to do with our CMed, which is medical dispatching under certain protocols. This gets switched over to a, to a regional medical dispatch system. They charge us a per capita dollar amount. So this is something that's, you know, if we're part of this system, we, we have to take this, you know, this is, this is a fixed, fixed dollar amount.
Not negotiable.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Break down below, the per capita went up or our population went down a little bit.
Right. Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department 206 Emergency Medical Services in the amount of $15,294.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Just point out, when we have a serious medical issue, because our people are first responders, and, you know, in order to get the, you know, to get the advice or, you know, the help, you know, through the dispatch system, they, they transfer it over to specialists who, who deal with those type of medical issues. If we had to train our own dispatchers to be certified, to be able to give that type of, you know, that, that type of, you know, input, it would be a lot more expensive for us. Plus, you know, you've got some potential liability issues, plus, it takes away from the person that spends a significant amount of time talking to that person and helping them out, which leaves them not available to take any other emergency calls, so it's really, you know, something that's, you know, is of a long-range benefit to the town, even a short-term benefit, so. Just want to make it clear.
Just to add to the town manager's kind of, increase our staffing, everybody needs to, so there's the option.
That's regionalization that works.
Next item is, would be, would be, would be the Capitol, J4. You can see the Police Department, total Police Department that I'm recommending be funded at an amount of $366,498. A lot of these items are yearly, you know, items, you know, computer rated dispatch and records, $15,000, computer replacement, $18,000. Patrol cruisers, we're, we've gone on a year of two cruisers, one year, three to next, two, three, and I think, did you, were you able to verify that, Rob?
Yeah, we, we budgeted two, we, we budgeted and funded, funded two cars in 2012, 13, and 14, three in 2015, and that was the first year we brought that maybe we'll go two, three, you know, on a rotating basis. So in year 16, we budgeted two, 17, this current year was going to be the three, but we deemed it, we couldn't do three in 17, we only budgeted two this year. So really, the only year we've had a three is 2015 so far in this, every other cycle, every early year cycle.
So I felt we should not put that off another year. And is the outfitting of the cruisers? The police equipment aggregate, the $7,500 is to replace our shotgun.
Is it, this is only two cars or three cars?
Three.
Three cars, okay.
Reason why we say two, three is because we go two, one year, three to next.
Okay, I just, for some reason, I thought there were three, but the numbers, the numbers look smaller. I thought it was over $100,000 to begin with, and it was cut.
When you, when you increase it, but if you, you have to...
Yeah, the outfitting.
The outfitting, with the cruisers, it's kind of a package deal.
With the newer cars, the outfitting has gone up a lot. So the outfit, we break it out separately because we can't, the newer cars, we couldn't transfer a lot of the equipment. They're a little bit smaller, I believe, chief, outside, so they're, you know...
Yes, you'd be set on new equipment as well.
Right.
Because of the secondary compartment, you are to contain the cargo in the back, so it's a little bit of an up cost there. But you'll also notice that down the road, we do start to project the savings of that because we'll start transferring the equipment...
Right.
Down from the new model cars to the next model, and hopefully, everybody stays on the same page, Ford included, and we will just keep bringing them down, but you see on the projected budget, we start to reap a benefit for 2019.
We used to keep it, we used to keep those two line items together, but once the cost started escalating and, you know, we decided to break it out easier, as you can see, and hopefully, there'll be some, like chief says, some reduction going forward.
I'm recommending finally that we, that we replace the animal control van, truck that we've used for many years. I know that council has heard that request for several years now, and I don't think, I don't think we should put it off any further. Replacing, or, you know, some of the deep ribs to further outfit the patrol cruisers, as well as some additional video cameras. We don't have them all in all of the cruisers yet, so this would, this would, I don't know if it finishes it yet.
I think, well, Robert, the next budget cycle will be up to all of the serviceable cars on the road for control would have cameras made to fix.
Chief had also asked for an additional truck, which I, you know...
Next.
That was...
That's the word.
While you're talking to the chief, I asked him what his, what his lowest priority was, and this was the lowest priority.
Yes, true.
So that's why, that's why I didn't make that recommendation. Never mind that, you know, you know, we're trying to not have, trying to be very judicious in our capital items as well, so. But I did want to, you know, I did want to point out that we are listing not just what we're recommending being funded, but, you know, but make it very easy for you to see what the requests were as well. In the past, I think we've just, at times, just listed what we were recommending.
The, the final book shows just what the recommendation is, but this, in this stage of the process, this book shows both. We can certainly add the requested column to the final budget book presentation if you would like, but it's not required for the budget or that...
Yeah, we do show it in another portion of the budget in, in the larger spreadsheet, that colored spreadsheet, but...
Yeah, that's the very small print that's hard to read, so.
See, I like seeing it because, like I said earlier, we can go back next year and say, you know, what was, you know, what was there, just for things that recur over and over again.
But honestly, it'd be easier for me to keep it in the final present, final book presentation because it's already, the document's already done. All you have to do is copy and change the numbers if you make any adjustments or, you know, versus deleting the column and creating a new document, it's totally up to you.
I think the only thing that I would, if we're going to do that, the only thing that I would do is, is ask you to perhaps bold the ones that we actually get funded.
Oh, yeah, I would, because that's...
So it would stand out a little bit better?
Absolutely, yes, yep.
Or you'd be making a different color, I don't know.
Yep, no, I did, we do that with every individual department budget anyway, so I would do that, yeah.
You know, that way you don't have to follow it across, you know?
Correct, yeah.
If you get older, it's a little bit more difficult to do that. Right, Eddie?
Absolutely.
There it is.
Okay, so have you got any questions for the chief? Or Eddie, about the Capitol?
Eddie's just biting at the bit for a question.
I know Eddie has all the...
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'm all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie, a quick question please.
Are you a central personnel? Yes. I'll be there. May I? Yes.
Do you want to take a break for a second? You want to keep moving along?
You guys think?
Okay, you can take a five minutes.
Okay. Nor be accused of...
Okay, let's go. C10, Rob, here it is.
Yes, this is Board of Assessment Appeals. Recommended budget is $2,097, a slight decrease of $569 or minus 21.34%. Sounds like a nice percentage, but it's a relatively small dollar amount. Basically, we see less meetings this year because it's not a red eye year.
Okay. Have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department 114 for $2,097. Second.
Motion second. Any comments? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is the Town Treasurer, C25. Recommended budget is $5,830, which is an increase of $115, 2.01%. It's basically the part-time salary of the Town Treasurer.
Madam Chair?
Glad, glad, sure.
Motion to fund Department 135 Town Treasurer in the amount of $5,830.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is Accounts and Control, C27, flip the page. Recommended budget is $206,402, which is an increase of $19,017 or 10.15%. The full-time salary account is increasing by a little bit over 2% to do with some rounding issues of $3,955. Otherwise, there's a slight increase in maintenance contracts. The, the increase here that's being recommended is a part-time salary position in the Finance Department of $15,000, and I'd like Rob to review with the council, because this basically is his recommendation, and I think he would be better able to explain.
Yes, we're looking to continue with the consolidation, you know, finance departments. We're getting bogged down a lot of day-to-day stuff. You know, like with any other consolidation, you take things on and it takes time away from doing what you do, paying a day out, and we're really struggling in a lot of ways to perform some of the higher-level tasks, you know, such as the budget process, the audit process, you know, reconciliations on a monthly basis for audit purposes, bank rights. We're looking to hire somebody part-time to do some of the day-to-day mundane things that we do that take us away from doing these other things. And when I say we, it's myself and Chad in the town side and the three people in the Board of Ed's Finance Department as well. So this position, we would envision having, you know, again, keeping with the consolidation theory, working on both sides of the defense as needed, when needed, because obviously there are different times of year that different things are needed in town side versus the board side, and vice versa. Depending on the quality of the hire, you know, this position could work out very well in part-time cases. I would love to have a full-time body, but given the budget constraints, I didn't feel that it was prudent for me to put forward a full-time position at this time. And if you recall, our town side has been reduced by two since I've been here almost 10 years. So we're at least one and a half has gone down. So, you know, we've, we've done more with less, and we're struggling right now to maintain that level. So I feel at this time, a part-time position is prudent to request anyway.
What's happening is that Rob and Chad are doing, you know, just some very mundane things, and it's taken up a lot, taken up, you know, some time that they could, you know, I believe they can better spend, you know, saving us money in the long run as well.
Yeah, it's a bigger, it's a bigger item for, you know, we're, you know, a lot of the reconciliations, the kind of reconciliation analysis, things where we, you know, like Robert said, help save money and, you know, purchasing, you know, we could maybe... Sabre said, help save money and, you know, purchasing, you know, we could maybe do a little, you know, better with that. We're just, we just don't have time to do the day-to-day stuff we do. This dollar amount's estimated based on a salary amount that, you know, for 19 hours a week. It's a little higher level position than, say, the library position at $14. I think I estimated this at, I think, one of the lowest levels in the union contract right now. So, again, that's why I say depending on the quality of the hire, you know, we can get a lot of those positions for relatively little money if we find the right person.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 136 for $206,402.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? I would like to ask if we could hold this one also until we get to the end. We've had other requests for some additional personnel. I understand your, your concern. I do.
That's fine.
And if we could hold approving this one until we get through everything else and see where we are, I'd appreciate that. We have a motion in a second, so I guess I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Can we just table?
We just want to table, well, postpone it?
I don't think you want me to hold this.
Do I have a motion to postpone it?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have one of those?
Move to postpone.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item is Assessment, C29. Recommended budget is $231,589, which is an increase of $21,460 or 10.21%. I would point out that the full-time salary is a union position, so it's, or at least what's driving up the increase, you know, over 2% is, is there's a, there's a union position that's getting a step increase, so that brings the 2% up to 3.16 rounded off. The other contractual is made up of two items. One is, we have bought software as part of our revaluation from Tyler, Tyler Software, and we are seeking a maintenance contract next year of $10,000 to maintain that service. $5,000 is, is actually a, a transfer from the tax collector's budget. So what you'll see on the next page is there's a decrease in the tax collector's budget to go into the assessor's budget, so, so we felt that we're better, better positioned in the, the assessor's office, not in the revenue collector or tax collector's budget. So, really, this budget, you know, if you take into account the revenue collector's budget is really, in other contractual, is an increase of $10,000. You know, $10,400 together is a reallocation from the, from the revenue collector's budget, which you'll see on the next, on the next page. The assessment software that we have right now is very antiquated and very difficult to work with, and with the revaluation we were able to purchase through the, you know, capital revow, able to buy the software, but we, now we have to maintain it.
And this is a software that feeds into GIS and everything else, so it's kind of compatible with what other departments and the public is looking for, for us to do. So, you know, but we purchased it with the, if you recall, that was the add-on, I believe, in the revow contract. We signed with the company about a year ago.
Any questions for Rob?
Have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Motion to fund Department 137 in the amount of $231,589.
I didn't approve the book or.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is Revenue Collector, C31. We flip the page. Recommended budget is $137,885, which is a decrease of $2,400 or minus 1.71%. You can see where full-time salary is going up just a little bit more than 2%. I think that's just around the error from previous years, slightly more in some overtime, basically to cover those, those days when the last day is on a, you know, a Friday or, you know, or even, you know, when we want to stay open a couple of hours on Saturday because of the, the dates. But the maintenance contract, this is the $5,100 reduction, and that's the reallocation to, to the assessments, or at least $5,000 of the $5,100 decrease.
Yeah, the billing estimate was just broken out a little more in better detail this year than it has been in the past. I was able to say, oh, this is assessor, this is tax collector, and we as well just put it in the appropriate budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 138 Revenue Collection in the amount of $137,885.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item we have is Insurance on page C37. Recommended budget is $668,715, which is an increase of $39,675 or 6.31%. Our increases are basically in two areas. One is risk insurance. And under the risk insurance, if you go down below under 52497, the risk insurance is made up of five items. We're seeing an increase in the liability from Karma, an increase of about $9,000. And what we're seeing from our, our bonds, we have certain employees that have bonded in, in some years. It's several employees and then it's, you know, it's a different amount each year. Next year, the bonds are a little bit higher because we have a couple of other, more employees that are, that are up for renewal, so that's.
They're rotating cycles and of various, various lengths on the, on the bonds, one year, two or three years, depends on when they kick in.
So that's an increase of $2,500. So that, that makes up the $11,675 increase there. Workman's comp is, is an increase of $28,000. Basically, the rate was the same for next year, but it's, it's when they do the audit of, of salaries and whatnot, which includes overtime.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, we, we got a good, we got a favorable rate, a 0% increase, but 0% increase is based on what the actual year comes out to be, and that includes our audit findings from 2016. So all the, all the, where, where it's essentially being driven up is the overtime costs. So all our road, our road bonds, there's overtime. You know, our police special duty, there's overtime. And we just simply blew the estimate for premium purposes, and the audit picked up on it, of course. And so that we have to adjust our line item to reflect zero at the increased rate. So once, you know, if we, if these grants or projects were to stop and our overtime went down, we could, you know, potentially lower that. But from a claim experience standpoint, the Colonel was generous enough to give us a 0% increase for 2018. See how that plays out going down the road. They will not give us a three-year rate lock as they have passed, simply because of our claim history, which has not been good over the years, although this past year has been okay, but this year is already trending upward. On the lab side, the year 2018 is the second year of a three-year rate lock, not to exceed 3%, which is primarily just, you know, cost increases. So right, right now, these are the best, these, these numbers are locked in at this point.
Is that it? That's all the explanation? Unless you have questions?
Yes, unless you have a question.
If you go down below where it says Karma, if you go to, down below where the blue line is, current year's budget is $378,000, and it's going to 406, which is basically the number you have up.
Okay. All right. Because I was looking at Department request manager, you know, and.
Yep.
And I looked at the 417, and it just wasn't.
Right.
Right, I had originally estimated more at 415.
Yeah.
But then after meeting with Karma and finalizing everything, we were able to reduce that, let that request down to 406. So I told the town manager, you can reduce this, and put that number going forward, 406.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 160 Insurance in the amount of $668,715.
Second. Second, any questions? Unless in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is Solid Waste Management, F7. Recommending a budget of $1,103,300, which is a decrease of $41,522 of minus 3.64%. I would point out that under other contractual, the decrease of $34,000, our contract for residential collection, which is, which used to be done by Latella, which is now being under ACWPM, the contract runs out in mid-September. I've had contact, I've had discussions with CWPM, Jason Manafort, about extending that contract. You may recall that it was a six-year contract with, with two, two-year renewals. Two, two-year renewals, you know, would have, would have continued us, you know, at our, where we stand right now. Well, basically, we could renegotiate the two, two-year renewals. We could, we could negotiate the two years. And so we sat down and discussed about the two-year renewal. CWPM, Jason pointed out that the barrels that we purchased initially was folded into the contract. When Latella bid the contract, he bid that the barrels would be, would be spread over 10 years, so he was taking a risk that the last four years that we would renew for the, for those, you know? So that's why, that's one of the reasons why he came in at the, at the lower amount, where other contractors, you know, wanted, didn't want to take that risk and folded the barrels into his, you know, into six years instead of 10 years. That was discussed somewhat back when that, when that occurred. So Jason did point out that if we extended the contract beyond the 10 years, that he would be able to give us the benefit of the fact that, you know, that we, that we weren't paying for the barrels anymore. We couldn't give it to us till we got past the 10th year, because he, he basically absorbed the contract that, you know, that Latella had with us. Although, you know, we could turn around and say, okay, we'll leave some to CWPM, and we already own the barrels, and see if we can get somebody else to give us a better deal. He proposed several, several options. One was a four-year renewal to get us to the 10th year, which would have kept us at the current cost per year without any increase. We're frozen our, our contract at where it is right now for the next four years. Or with an eight-year extension, he would reduce, he would reduce the, the current year from 549 to 513, and hold that price for the next eight years, not increase it at all. So it's a firm price for eight years. Bulky waste, we're currently paying, I think, 26, 20, I think there's.
20, 20.
The 28?
No, 20, 20, 28 and change, 28.5, something like that.
28 and change. He did indicate that, you know, bulky waste is costing a little bit more, you know, that, you know, he's incurring a lot more cost on bulky waste. We negotiated that that would, that that would go to $32,000 per year for no increase as well. I think it's, you know, I think CWPM has done a very good job for the town. I think they're going to be around for at least the next eight years. I think they gave us a price that, you know, without an increase over a period of time and taking into account the, the fact that the barrels will be paid off. I would point out that the, that one reason, one, there's two good reasons why he's able to hold the price, or at least it's easier for him to hold the price. One is that we pay for the, for the diesel fuel for the trucks. He fills up, you know, so he doesn't have to worry about trying to figure out, well, where's diesel fuel going for the next eight years? Otherwise, he's going to have to speculate, and he, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna give us a higher number to cover, you know, where diesel may go, you know? So, so he doesn't have to worry about that, you know? And, and so he, you know, so he doesn't have to, have to factor it in. And the second thing is, we pay the tip fee at, at Covetta, so he doesn't have to worry about, well, how many tons are going to be, you know, and where's the tip fee going to go over the next eight years? Because we, we take that mystery away from him, and that's just a plug-in number to whatever it is for us. We're paying for exactly what it costs rather than what he puts on top of that. So, based on those two factors, he feels that, you know, he can, he can, he can control his, his other costs, which is, you know, the truck itself and, and labor costs. So if, if you, you know, so this, this proposed budget factors in the renewal of the contract at eight years, which, you know, if, if you accept that, if, you know, if you accept that premise, then, you know, we would put this on a future council meeting, maybe the next one, you know, to, to renew the contract going forward. If you don't want to, if you're not of a mind to do that, we'd have to readjust this budget, but I, you know, it was my recommendation that we, that we, that we, you know, based upon the proposal that he gave us, that we renew it over a year period of time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Lee, how, how long has CWPM taken over the contract?
I think they've been doing it for two.
Two and a half, three years. Well, at the end of this, in September, at the end of the contract, it'll be.
Three years? Two years?
Two and a half, three year, yeah, yeah.
And we originally had a, would you say, 10-year contract?
We had a six-year contract with, so the six years will be up in September.
Will be up in September, okay.
And then we have two, two-year renewals, which, which are negotiated prices. So what he negotiated was four years, which was basically, I'll hold my price, if you want to do it for four years, I'll hold my price for, for either two years or four years.
So since CWPM has had the contract, they have not gone up, is that right?
They're following the contract that was originally.
Yeah, whatever we.
Which did, which did have an escalation.
Which is a slight increase.
Yes. Yes, I think it was.
Two, between two and two and a half percent, depending on the year. It varied, but it was about the, around that average.
Thank you.
The other items in here, you know, we see a slight decrease in, in our recycling costs. Rob was going to take a look at the, at the gasoline and diesel, but I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I mean, our, our bid price for diesel came in a little lower than this, but I don't really want to, you know, the estimate of gallons could sway us. So if, if in fact a line item itself is a little bit too high based on usage, you know, we transfer it out to another line item that somewhere in the budget is too low, i.e. lease overtime.
The part-time salary is, is basically, you know, we eliminated the part-time person in here, and some of those, some of those duties have been picked up by Scott. So, you know, so we, we took it out of here and, and put it into the town manager's, you know, department.
Okay. Any comments? Or would you like to think about this and hold this one out as well until we move along a little more? It's a lot to digest, but we don't have a lot to prove it tonight. We can think about it. If questions occur, get them answered before we go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I would agree, Madam Chair, table. I mean, it's, because it involves a significant contract that.
Okay.
Not that I, you know, sway one, you know, or anything like that, but, you know, it's a major, it's, it involves another factor other than the budget.
And other questions may come up that you can forward to the town manager or to Rob to just get clarity on it? to just get clarity on it.
Exactly.
Is everybody all right with holding this one out?
Mr. Lee, just one, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, go ahead.
Another question. This eight-year extension that you're proposing we would take, you said that's included in this budget now?
Yes.
That's what these numbers are.
And it was noted on page F6, yeah. That was a tentative commitment.
Okay.
Yeah, the allocation between garbage and the recycling land is, at this point, just an allocation, it's not exact, because if you look at his email, it doesn't give you the exact, you know, components of the total contract, so I made it work to equal that total dollar amount.
We'll, we'll hold that one out and let you have us finish the rest of this.
Okay. Next item I have is debt service, which is on page H3. Basically, we see interest going down by 102,000, well, excuse me, the recommended budget is $4,712,294, which should be a number that's familiar to you, so you used that number for three previous fiscal years. In this particular budget, we see principal going up slightly, interest going down by $102,000, miscellaneous costs going up by 97, basically that's, that's the amount that's going into debt, to, to the debt maintenance, debt service maintenance is, is, what are you estimating for next year, Rob? 200?
Well, that, that 271...
Includes some miscellaneous fees, right?
Right, it's an unknown, based on what we do during the year, whether it's, you know...
Temporary borrowing.
Temporary borrowing, rolling over the ban and/or currently financing other bond offerings. Whatever is not physically spent as a fee to an outside company would be transferred to the debt management fund for future bond payments, to be used for future bond payments. So if you look at, you know, the actual expense in 16, 2016, we spent $16,000, but the budget was actually the $4,712,294. Well, that difference between the 4712 and the 4517, what does that manage? Okay, it's, it's part of your fourth quarter transfers to go to the yellow department. We have to do that for, for other purposes, so.
This is an analysis that I did a couple of weeks ago as part of the school building project, might help you as far as, you know, looking forward as to where we're going with our debt. I have two, two sets here, the upper and the lower. Basically, what I was, what I was looking to show here is, you know, if we, we're authorized right now to spend $5 million, to, to, you know, bond $5 million more in debt, we haven't done it yet, we're doing some temporary borrowings on that. And, you know, looking at, looking at a, a, a school, school projects of $13.5 million, so that's a total of $18.5 million. So the top analysis was if we did, you know, the $18.5 million. You may recall that as our discussion, it looked like our, you know, the share was going to be closer to $14 million, so the, the, the bottom analysis is our current debt plus, you know, the $5 million plus the 14, which is a total of $19 million, $500,000 more. So I'd like to concentrate on the bottom portion, if that's okay, because, you know, that seems to be where we're heading. I'm not saying that's where we're heading, but, you know, that's where, you know, that's where we're heading right now. The current debt schedule is on the left, we're actually paying towards debt, our current debt schedule. And that does match up to some of the numbers that are in the budget. But for fiscal year 18, you know, for fiscal year 18, for example, we're proposed to, to pay principal and interest $4,380,325, which is a decrease from fiscal year 17 of $148,000. So our debt service is going down. And then next year it'll go down another $589,000, and then the year after that it goes down $49,000, the year after that $612,000. So you can see where, over the next several years, we're going to see a significant decrease in our debt. Or if we had, if we layer in the current debt plus the $19 million debt schedule, then that debt schedule shows that in fiscal year 18, we were going to do some borrowing. Well, let me get this right. So our, our debt schedule for, our actual proposed debt, we're going to do some temporary borrowing next year. So that's, that's why that, that actually would stay at the, the current level of four, instead of going down to 4380, would actually stay at 4528886. So it'll be no decrease from what we're currently paying. But in the following year, fiscal year 19, where we have a relatively large drop of $589,000, we would be layering in new debt, so it would, instead of going down 589, we'll go down by $62,000, okay? The year after that, instead of going down by another $49,000, we'd be at 4434. So what you're, what you're seeing here is that even when we layer in the new debt, you know, we would still be at 5, 4528, that would be our highest point, and we would go down from there. We're, we're currently, we're currently carrying a line item of 4712, which is the last column, you know, kind of in tann. And what you'll see is, is under 4712, even with the $19 million debt schedule, you can see that we're significantly below the 4712 all the way through those years. And there's some significant decreases as we get into the out years. You get into fiscal year 21, which sounds like it's far away, but we're already at fiscal year 18, so it's three years out when we're, we'll be talking about. You're talking about decreases of $470,000, $483,000, $483 a year after, and over $1 million, $1 million, and $2 million after that. Certainly leaving the town with, you know, sufficient buffer to either, you know, continue on with the road bond without increasing our debt line item at 4712, you know, perhaps considering some other things, that we have a, a large expenditure that's, you know, coming up in the not-too-distant future in the fire department, which is the, which is the ladder truck, the tower, which is probably a $1 million, you know, purchase all by itself, you know, which could be layered into this without impacting our debt service, if that was, certainly would give you an option of doing something like that. It's not unusual for towns to, on a large purchase like that, to, to, to actually bond that debt, because those trucks are exposed to glass for, you know, 20-plus years. We've done some of the, some of the, you know, the, the pumpers, you know, over five years, but, but, but you may recall that we have three pumpers and a rescue truck, their est, their estimated life is five years, uh, 20 years, we, we do a new one and we, we fund it over five years, so, so we can cover those four trucks over the 20-year period, you know, that's, that's what our current capital project plan shows. How you would layer in a $1 million increase, you know, a purchase to that would be very difficult in terms of a capital improvement plan, so there's that opportunity to do it under debt. Remember, that's, that isn't the only vehicles we have at the fire department, we have some, you know, we have some rush vehicles and some other vehicles that have to get replaced as well, so, you know, keep that into account. So, you know, there are some opportunities, you know, you know, even with the debt service that's being proposed, and this analysis shows you that there's, there's certainly sufficient capacity at, at the current, you know, line item that we've, that we've had in the budget, the 4712 number that we've been carrying since fiscal year 15. So I just wanted to give, you know, and, you know, even to the point where, you know, as we, as we go forward, depending on where we're at the school building project, as we begin to look at how we're going to fund other projects, whether that, you know, does the council want to turn around and win this five-year road bond and go into the next five years, because, you know, it's not going to take care of all the roads, we, we know that's going to take significantly more dollars than that. There's certainly is an opportunity to do that, it's not going to impact us until the later years, but in the later years, we're seeing significant decrease in our, in our debt service going forward, so we, we have the capacity to absorb that. And what you want to do with the fire truck, and what you may want to do with, with other, you know, building, you know, situations that might come up, none of them that, you know, we're necessarily aware of at this point in time. There's no overriding need to do any of, if, if Wheeler School gets done, the high school gets done, you know, even the middle school, you know, we're talking about maybe five years out, look at, you know, a major project that's 25 years old, we'll do the roof, but not do something for the next five years, there's certainly capacity in our debt service to be able to absorb that until school year 23, 24, or 25. So we're in a pretty good position as far as our debt is concerned, and, you know, I just wanted to point that out as we, as we speak about debt service at this point in Certainly keep this, you know, look it over, you know, if you want to have further discussion on it, we certainly can, but I tried to keep it as, you know, we can give you a spreadsheet that's this wide with every single, you know, piece in it, I tried to summarize it so that it's, it's kind of easy, easier to follow, at least it's easier for me to follow and hopefully for you to follow as well.
I don't know if you already said it, I mean, we had, we have a little bit in the debt management fund at this point?
Yeah.
And that's kind of factored into these numbers, or it's...
No, no, that's, that's even on top of that, yeah.
What is that, it was, it wasn't a big number, it was just like...
We're right about, at the end of, at the end of 2016, we're just shy of 210,000, I believe, so whatever we put into the fund after this current year, which right now I'm estimating to be about 183,000, so we'll be around...
400.
400 or plus by the end of this fiscal year, and that money could be used again for future debt payments and, you know, how we play into, to our whole concept, or our whole plan going forward.
Which we could use to, you know, potentially lower the 4712.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what the money's put aside for, essentially that, so you see the big reductions in 19, but that's, you know, that's where we're really going to start looking at savings.
So when people talk about, you know, a potential backup plan, this somewhat factors into that, but, you know, I'm not, you know, I don't want to publicly talk about a backup plan, because that's all we'll talk about, is the backup plan, you know? So when somebody says you've got a backup plan, it's like, no. But in a way, we, you know, we do have some things in the back of our mind, part of the play, but I, I just don't want to be discussing a backup, a backup plan that may never occur. That's all we're talking about. So this would factor into something, is, is, is what we have in our debt service, what we have in our unassigned right now, you know, how would we, you know, once this, once we have a two-year budget in place and we know what the numbers are, then we can, you know, we can start, you know, when do you plan for that? You know, you know what I mean? You know, we, you plan for it before it happens or, or after it happens?
A little bit of both.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that, you know, as we go through this budget, you've heard, you know, some things that we didn't fund, that people are saying, we think we should, and, and on the, on the normal circumstances, we would fund it. You know, on the normal circumstances, putting the HVAC person in there would be automatic. You may say, you may say, you know, based upon the discussion we had this evening, that, well, maybe it should be automatic. You know, under normal circumstances, we would buy that truck in the water push control authority, but these aren't normal circumstances, so, you know, you know, but you may turn around and say, well, based on the discussion, you know, it's, it's really given up too much. So we've already begun to, to, to make some, at least from my perspective, you know, some, some reductions or, or some adjustments. And that's why when we talk about, you know, further reducing the capital, you know, the capital improvement program, you know, we've already, you know, in order to get to where we are now, I mean, I'd probably, under normal circumstances, would have proposed that the capital improvement program be increased next year, giving it the same as, you know, you can see what we're leaving on the outside. You know, we pushed back, you know, our plan to do 2323 for the, for the police department, you know, pushed it back a year, you know, then we pushed it back again, you know, you know, you know, those kinds of things just, you know, load up, you know, as, as far as the loader is concerned, yeah, we could probably squeeze another year out of it. Where does that put us next year when we need to get other stuff? And what happens if it goes down? You know, there's, there's obviously alternatives we can do, so, so, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. So I just, hopefully, hopefully these numbers are helpful for you in understanding where we stand.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Okay. So debt service, do we need a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 710 debt service in the amount of $4,712,294.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item I have is employee benefits, that's H5. Recommending a budget of $3,354,505, is an increase of $124,450 or 3.85%. This is one of the, you know, larger increases that was pointed out as, as part of our summary. We see municipal retirement and police retirement going up by, municipal retirement by $36,860 and police retirement going up by $23,580. Part of the municipal retirement includes the, what we have for a defined benefit plan based upon our actuary reports, and police retirement is all, I believe, defined benefit, so that goes up by, based on the actuary recommendation. We are standing in both municipal retirement on, and, and police retirement on defined benefit.
About 82, 83%.
Funded, which is pretty good. And, and the actuary is based upon the end of fiscal year 16.
It's, yeah, July 1st, 16.
Which was, you know, last year was a bad, you know, not necessarily a good year for investments, you know, so far so good this year, so, you know, maybe that'll help us next year. But we are still recommending a, that we, that we fund, you know, based upon the actuary, although there are many communities that are significantly below 80% funded.
Yeah, we, we've done good to get to the 82, 83%. I, you know, and the changes we've made to the plan, like you hear about the state not changing their plan, and we've done all that, or are in a step ladder process of getting to where we ultimately need to be. So those changes that we're, we're making are increasing our contribution, because we simply have to.
And that's the assumption on what you're going to make on the, you know, in the pension investments. The assumption is being lowered by 8%, you know, we're, we're lowering a quarter percent each year, which drives up the, you know, the actual cost, you know, our cost, because we're not getting the, we're not anticipating the investment income.
The life expectancy, mortality tables, as they call them, you know, those are, you know, people are living longer, so we're incorporating those tables into our plans as well, smoothing that out over 30 years, and, you know, so we're doing everything we can, but everything we do does increase our cost because of the type of plan they have, and the longer pay, payment string for people are living.
As far as the FICA, FICA is depending upon payroll, and FICA does include, you know, overtime, so, you know...
Yeah, it's, we're getting hit, again, it's the overtime we're getting hit on, so, you know, we're a little bit low. You know, you see, I've, I've estimated a little bit higher than our budget this year for FICA for that reason, so I'm adjusting it to where I think we should be based on our payroll and overtime costs.
The medical premiums are fairly flat for us, but still a $33,000 increase. We see life insurance going down, deferred compensation up slightly, unemployment going down slightly, although that could change. And physicals, vaccines, we see it going up a little bit based upon past history, police turnover, and, and we have a requirement in our, in our...
Public works.
Public works to begin to contribute to some CDL costs, which are no longer, there's some issues about it being covered under existing insurance.
Yeah, I think there's...
They have to go to a separate, they have to go to a special doctor, which could be a, a separate doctor from their own doctor, which would not, which would not be covered by the health insurance.
It used to be like every primary care doctor would do it, now there's not very, many left.
Yeah. It's like a requirement of CDL, and you have to, it used to be, the health insurance won't cover it because you're, you get one physical a year here, regardless of whether you have a CDL or not, they have to get two, so health insurance won't cover it. We felt it was more prudent... We felt it was more prudent to contract with our, the medical place we deal with, sorry, can't think of the word, and versus having the individual employee go and get their own physical somewhere and give us the bill. We can contract for multiple physicals at a lower rate than having the individuals go out separately and do it on their own.
Yeah, get their own, so...
And if their, their licenses obviously vary over, you know, not everybody's license expires at the same time, so as you know, so we're kind of factoring in that, that change this year.
It's not a major increase, it's a $4,000, that's part of the $4,000, but we are running over an item to begin with, so...
Correct.
This might be a big question, but like, when you, when you talk about municipal retirement, how far does it go out, like, how many employees are still left in that plan?
All the police are still in the plan.
Yeah, I know the police retirement, but the municipal...
How about employees that are still working for us, not the retired?
Yeah, I, I was trying to say, that's what I was thinking, I was trying to, I think we have, on the town side, I believe we have six or seven that are in this plan, if that. On the board side, there are about the same number, so I'm gonna guess between 10 and 15 employees still working that are on the plan. But obviously, all the employees that retired from this plan previously and are still living are being paid out. We're paying out on average, between the two plans, police and the municipal, the municipal is town and board of that, so there's really three separate plans within the two that you see here. We're paying out about $180,000 a month in benefits right now. The actuarial reports estimate, you know, everybody living till actuarial death, whatever age that may be at this time, I think it's 83, so, you know, it's, it's a long payment string. It's a long payment string.
Yeah, but to space living longer than...
Yes, well, and a lot of people do, a lot of people do, and that's, you know, I mean, we have people being paid who are substantially older than, like, 83, and I'm just picking 83, I'm not sure if that's the actual date or age on...
Expiration date.
Expiration, yeah. I didn't want to say that, but, yeah. But we have, you know, it's a long payment string, and depending on, you know, if you can go to spouse, beneficiaries and spouses, depends on what you pick when you retire, so it's a big number.
But it's easy to say that, I mean, the town will be working with the municipal retirement for at least like the next 35 years.
Oh, I mean, even when these, you know, 10 to 15 employees retire, this plan, we're still gonna be funding this substantially longer than the last person who retires under this plan, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hopefully at a lower rate.
Well, there won't be any employee contributions going into the plan at that point either, if no employees are, you know, so it'll all of a sudden be 100% us. So, yeah, I mean, no...
But when they reach that expiration date.
Well, yeah, well... It's possible, yeah.
I guess this is kinda sad to talk about.
Okay. So would you like to update this one tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 820 employee benefits in the amount of $3,354,505.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, next item we have... How late are we gonna go?
Whatever your pleasure is.
We can take up the next section on Thursday or Wednesday if you like, if you don't...
10:00 after nine, do you guys want to come up quicks and then finish this up, our next get-together?
Yeah, Wednesday is not that long a night, so...
On Thursday, we only have two items.
Yeah.
I'm okay if we stop here tonight.
Yeah, I think so.
Do enough stuff that we can go back and, or I'd like to look at that.
Sure, that's fine with us.
This is gonna be first, Jerry.
I think we got a lot done though.
Yeah.
One of the things I did do, we did hand you a copy of the police vehicles, I had sent this to you electronically, but we gave you a hard copy, and when we get to the veterans thing, you know, Veterans Strong, you'll see it, item for $4,200 in there, just gives you a little bit of explanation, it's a regional effort. I felt it was something that, because it was a regional effort that, and it dealt with veterans, that I thought it was very valuable to contribute to it, although, you know, we have the Veterans Committee, but in talking to the Veterans Committee, while a lot of our veterans may not take advantage of the Army Strong right now, I think as it becomes a regional thing, it may become, I think it would be a good thing for our veterans to have.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Stay safe tomorrow, although you're all staying home, right?